I'd like to call this meeting for January 2nd, 2013 to order for the issues. I would ring the invocation tonight and I would ask Noddy Ors, who's been pledging his word, would stand please.
Mr. Clark.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, for the blessing of this day. We thank you, Lord, that you've watched over us and cared for us. We thank you, Lord, for the safety that you've given us. And just asking, as we have this time here together tonight, that Lord God be following your direction and that Lord God things be done in the right way. We thank you, Lord, for every person. We pray for those in our county, for those in our state, nation, and world. We pray for our leaders. We pray for those that are serving our country in harm's way. Now, Lord, take us, use us to your glory. This is what I ask in Jesus' name, Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I just wondered if Commissioner Williams might be able to attend this meeting via telefonia, so his input, it is by law permissible, and will have his intended in that way. So this time, I'd like to ask the board if we could please have approval or any change on to the agenda. Ms. Clark, can I hear you say it with the mic and the changes?
There are, yes, sir. Number one, under discussion items, it'll be the hauling of recyclables, metal, truck tire, for Main County.
Okay, this is to speak ahead of recently partnership. Is that the board?
No, sir, this will be in...
Discussion items number 13. Yes, under no business. Okay, she kicked everybody's topic there. Okay, you did, alright, thank you. So, under new no business, this will be metals recycling?
Yes, sir. Amendments to the personnel policy.
Okay.
Transit storage building.
Okay.
Mantha Creek Bridge comments from DOT, if you've had those in your packet.
Yes.
Any comments about that? EMD training for communications. And under item number 11, with Health Department Director Lisa Parra, discussion and possible action over the storage building, she requested her workshop presentation.
Potential action.
Yes, sir. And under action items 14, there will be a recommendation for a new traveling tourism board member. And under action items, the clerk magistrate moves between jail...
Offices.
Yes, man, the offices. Clerk magistrate. And out of the workshop, we entertain the thought of a possible resolution from the chair of Skyline, as you mentioned in the workshop.
Okay, can that be under new no business? That one for the resolution. Okay, is everybody up to speed on what the changes are to the agenda? Are there any changes? Yes, sir.
Just wondering real quick, under the finance report, that there was a discussion, they tabled budget amendment eight for the lottery funds.
Uh huh.
There's a discussion there.
And now, do you have any discussion items?
Yes.
Alright. Any further changes? Alright, if not, then I have a motion that we accept the agenda as amended. You have a motion?
Say it.
Second, any further discussion? All pros, say it with a hand, all opposed, sign. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to ask a motion, to entertain a motion to, for the approval of the minutes for the workshop meeting in 1217, 2012, regular meeting in 1217, 2012, the emergency meeting of January 2nd, 2013.
Do you want to?
Okay, we have a motion?
Say it.
I have a second. Any discussion? All pros, say it with a hand, all opposed, sign. Thank you very much. This time, I will recognize Mr. Rebecca Garland for a finance report.
I'm going to mix the agenda just a tad, as you noted when I asked for the amendment to the finance report. I'm going to have, we had a budget amendment number eight that was presented in December, and that is probably the third item in your packet, for a request for lottery funds, about $239,000, from the schools, that will be passed through to the schools, that will come from state funds.
Okay, hold on, this is...
Yeah, the third, I'm sorry, it's the third item, third, about the third item in your packet.
I didn't have it in my packet, I'm sorry, I've got so much up there. I'm sorry.
And I, we had some questions at the last meeting, which caused this amendment to be tabled, and I requested Mr. Chip Caringer and Mr. Lester Green to cover this system to, I think the board had some questions and requests to that, and I wanted to do that first, so that they could do whatever they needed to do this thing.
Okay, that's, that's good, that's great, thank you. We'll recognize the votes for break, hands, bills, thank you very much. Thank you. Glad to be here.
Thank you, board members. For having us, I guess, basically all we need to signature, we're asking for your approval to use lottery funds to renovate YDC. As you know, our YDC students and staff are in, we used to be the old funeral home, and so we have contracted with Williams Construction to renovate YDC, and it's moving along rapidly. And we're already having to grow down our fund balance to pay this, pay Williams Construction, so $239,000 is circulate from right now in the lottery fund. And that's flow-through money, those are monies that can only be used for renovation and over school construction. So we just need the board's chair to sign off on an application for us, if anyone agrees with yourself.
I have no, I have no problem with that whatsoever. One, one concern that the conversation rose about is not that you're exact, but if you draw down the 239,000, I think it's going to be around $54,000 in that account. That's just one, one thing that we observe. Another point is, and just to cut to the chase, is that during our mediation period, one of the things that we were told, it is that the bounce, fund bounce that was there, that those funds would be readily available to do those capital outlay projects. And then we hear this request tonight again, that the lottery funds are going to be used instead of that bounce. I just need some explanation about that.
Okay, we have, we have some other, couple of other issues that come up recently. One of them is our surveillance equipment, is that they need to be replaced. So we'll just, just be using very, asking if lottery funds or issues of fund balance to take care of that possibly. But that's one issue that needs to be taken care of. And also, another issue we want to look at is air conditioners for both our gymnasiums, YDC, YDC that Youth County League uses those gyms quite a bit. It would be nice to get those air conditioned, so we didn't have to come out with just our gym on site.
Is that, is that the unrock gym and the elevator gym that you're talking about?
Yes, we're looking at it.
Okay.
And we're committed to it, we're looking into it. Right, so it just needs to be trained.
Okay. And just one other question, I guess it's a lesser, we have wanted to open up this avenue of communication back and forth, and we want that to work worse than any way you can understand. And really, you're not have to come here and ask permission for that, for that money lottery, I know what the law says and how it's called, but we need to understand about the expenditure, where was this, with what we're trying to discuss. And we're not going to go through this whole thing of mediation, that's not, that's not what's on the table. But what we do need to know are the issues of expenditures, so that we can plan. And I hope, I don't know when the next meeting between our folks is supposed to be, but I hope, you know, that that'll happen, we can kind of understand.
And we've discussed it, I assume it would be here in the next few weeks. Definitely, the first meeting we had went well, and I assume...
But I would want, thank you for coming here and being here, and it's not because you had to come and ask for money, it's over here anyway, but we need to understand about the expenditures on it. And one other thing too, that tick, which is, is that we did not receive, as a county, any notification about expenditure on property that you purchased recently, not one word.
That expenditure is on a spreadsheet that you have, you should have a spreadsheet.
It's on the page today.
We're just not getting it, Pam?
It's on the spreadsheet. It's right up front, it's the, yeah, there's an email, and then there's a spreadsheet that's...
Okay. Alright, I see.
The email.
Alright.
Yes, the results for last board meeting, we tabled our request for use of lottery funds, you can request the information about our projects that we've had during the fiscal year. And as a result of that request, this spreadsheet is a list of the projects we've had last fiscal year and this fiscal year. If you'll look at that spreadsheet, to the bottom of the page on the far right, in this fiscal year, we've got projects that we have already made expenditures for, for approximately $975,000. So that's where some of that fund balance is going. On that spreadsheet, you'll see highlighted there in yellow, that says capital outlay fund. We're required to make those expenditures out of the capital outlay fund. And you questioned, where do those funds come from? We have made transfers during fiscal year from fund balance, specifically impact aid funds. And we mentioned in previous meetings, and in the past two fiscal years, we've received approximately $2 million in impact aid funds. We've transferred those funds into the capital outlay fund to make these expenditures. That's, that's where these numbers come from. And again, that's $1 million on those, but we'd like to use lottery funds to renovate the youth buildings.
Okay, I see. This is the first I see. Okay, was it given to us this week?
We got it, I emailed it before Christmas.
Alright, great, thank you.
So we're, we're using our fund balance, the projects that are being, that are really extremely needed. We've replaced two children at the high school, and you can see on that list, those are big, big problems. We've talked about those children now for five, six, seven years. We're going to replace the roof of the...
Capitality Cafeteria.
So you can see the level of expenditures that we made, just a year and a half on this.
And then there's a half a million dollars for property.
That's on your list, yes.
Okay. Only question I had about that is the issue that was there any taxpayer money from Grand County that uses this property?
No.
No, let's see that. That's all I needed, though. Ms. Garland, any of the rest of the board?
No.
And I really do thank you, thank you very much. That amendment will be done tonight, it's flow-through.
We'll, we'll fax it in. We're going to get the money.
Thank you, let's keep talking. Alright, thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Garland?
Thank you for jumping in, I'd probably give it very... Okay, just, I've got your financial highlights for the month of December of 2012. I'm happy to report that our cash balance in the general fund was $5,121,000. That's the first time I've seen our cash balance at $5 million since probably 2005. I'm real pleased to report that.
Can you tell what percent that is, fund balance?
We are at about 25%.
Thank you.
We closed the audit year out, we're right at, I think, 22%, I think I recorded last, last time we made. We're still a tad short of 28% that the state requires, but we've come a long way from 8%. So I'm really pleased with that. If you want to flip to page three, our total collections and add more taxes for the month of December, for the current year taxes were $961,401. Prior year taxes were right at a little, little bit above $11,000, for a total of $972,600 in tax collections. If you scan across the page, just to the year before, we are a little bit below last December, but we're still ahead of the game for last fiscal year. We just had some people that paid a little quicker than we. Our total DMV collections are $28,000 and some change, as opposed to about $27,000 this time last year in December, so we're, we're up on DMV, which is, for the first time, this is two months in a row since I came to work here. Our total collections, if you'll flick to page four, for the year in real taxes, real property taxes, are $4,999,299. DMV collections were right at 140,000. We have collected 42,000 more this year than last year in real property taxes, and 4,500 more in DMV, which again, that's the first time since I've been here. Our tax collection rate for the end of December was at 77.28%. This time last year, we were at 75%. So once again, I want to be very thankful to the taxpayers of Grand County for supporting the cause and being on time with the tax payments. If you want to flip to page five, our total revenues collected for the month of December, highlighted in yellow, is just a little over $1.8 million. Our expenditure is $1.2 million. And again, that was, we had to pay some TBA guilt, then he backed to Swank County and that's it, to even everything out, for a surplus of $547,500. Our total year-to-date surplus, if you flip to page six, highlighted in yellow, are $1.9 million. We're doing a little better than this time last year, which I'm bringing a little side relief. This time last year, we were at $1.6 million in surplus. We will not close the year out with that, but it is giving us an additional cushion that I was not anticipating, wasn't even hoping for, so I'm, I'm really pleased with that. We have collected 300, excuse me, 681,000 in revenue more than this time last year, however, a big chunk of that is the grant money that has come in to build our transit facility. And our expenditures are higher, 435,000, but 359,000 of that was for the facility. So actually, our expenditures are just a little higher than our revenues are much higher. Part of the reason our revenues are higher, if you flip to page seven, is that our sales tax collections are better. We are, we have collected right at $59,000 more in sales tax this time, over this time last year, and this is the first year since I came to work, that we are in a surplus on sales tax, if you, if you look on a year-by-year basis. Our collections for the month of January, which were, November collections, were $122,700. That was probably right at the beginning of the Christmas season, so I'm hoping that we'll have a nice little bump in January, or February as well. And it does show that, that more money is being spent in the county, which is a good thing. So any questions on the highlights?
No, that's really good, I appreciate the highlights.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm really excited about how far the county has been able to come since I came, you know, it's not because I came to work here by any strange, it's just that I think the county's really been more cognizant of how we spend and how we do business, and, and it's, it's being reflected in how we're doing financially. My next section, I dropped ahead, it's just a budget analysis I've given you by department, and I've highlighted the, we do have a couple of departments that are running a little hot, which I've highlighted those. Most of that, one department in particular looks like the election ward, but that is because we had that additional primary, that we are getting some grant funds to offset that, it looks like, so, so we're good on that. The magic number is 50%. You'll note that most of the departments are running a little bit below, we're right at the 50% mark. I don't see any real trouble spots. Everything as far as the overages are explainable. We, for instance, the singer's stand is going a little hot because we have a lot more demand for meals, but I think that department manager's doing some things to, to alleviate that. And then recreation, I think I mentioned that last time, we, we had to totally refurbish all of our football helmets this year, which they were not anticipating, he was thinking it'd be next year, but it's more important our children to be safe. And so he and I are working closely to make sure that he's staying on track as far as any other expenditures he has. And he has been able to make efficient collections for uniforms and whatnot that's going to be offset. So overall, I feel really good that the county's staying within its budget, and maybe within its needs, I'm pleased with that. I do have available the line item analysis, if you'd like to have, it's about 40 pages long, if you want to combine it and get that too. Okay. I do have one additional budget amendment. It's going to be budget amendment number 15. For some reason, I didn't give myself a copy. This is the, this is the budget amendment to recognize the penalty reversion, the Stanley furniture, as paid to Grand County, which passes through to the Golden Leaf Foundation, $13,184. That penalty has been collected and has been sent to Golden Leaf. So we're, we are in compliance with, with that grant, the grant now, this time. I do have some new signature cards that I need to give to you, we can get signatures this evening. I tried the color code, and got the code on the front of them, Mr. Edward, red, Mr. Williams will be yellow, we can get him in, Ms. Ori will be blue, Mr. Hopper will be green, and Mr. Allen will be black. So if you guys get excited, remember where that color is, just to light some fun. We have to get new signature cards every time we have a new board member, and so now we've got, and Mr. Allen, that's what I'm referencing out. Just a couple of short items, I did want to mention that we are implementing the new DMV tax collection process, and it's, when we went to the Department of Revenue for several hours, back in, I think, one in August, and then when I went in November, they were really, they really emphasized the importance of the county's advertising and advising the taxpayers on how this new system's going to work, where you'll pay for your tag with your, you pay your taxes when you buy your tag. And the reason that they really feel like that we need to advertise this issue is that depending on when you pay for your, your taxes under the old system, there is a possibility that you could be, this is paid in arrears now, and the new system you're paying in advance, depending on where you fall in the cycle, there's a possibility that you could be paying taxes twice in one year. And so the DMV has given us sort of a little blurb to either put in the paper or do a write-up. It'd be really nice if we could do a write-up in the paper as opposed to an advertise, but we do need to, to try to advertise this or advise the taxpayers so they don't know if they get a bill from us and then a bill from the DMV that's got taxes on it, it's because of the way to the switch-up. Of course, that only occurred this first year, and then everybody will be on, on their own cycle again.
Well, can I ask a question? Alright, I'm one of those people, now with this, I, I, I find my, I read in my registration on a tag online. So what's going to happen? I pay my taxes online?
You'll pay your taxes online when you pay your tag there.
That's right. And if I go here in town to the DMV office, I go in there, and they're going to pay the assessed value of the vehicle for the tax issue.
Right.
And the possibility, I could do that twice.
It, it, yeah, depending on where you fall in their, their cycle, because you know, we all get our tags at different times now, and they pay our taxes at different times too, it used to be all in December, but...
When you start boom. Wow, okay, alright, thank you.
So, I just wanted to kind of do that as an advisory. And then, couple last items, DSS is an armament of a shredder. They have, you know, the same issues of confidentiality as other departments that, like for instance, the Health Department, or even our department. And in order to get a shredder which is comparable to the one that's in the administrative office, which is more of a heavy-duty shredder that'll last for quite a while, to get a crosscut shredder, you're looking at $2,267.99. To get a strip-cut shredder, which is a little less advisable when you've got confidential documents, you're looking at $2,072.69. We can file this on our 1571 and get reimbursement back for probably two-thirds of it, but we need approval for it.
And it will be an actual...
Right. And then just a couple of things that just has come up, just, and I think, and Mr. Cable may have this on his list as well, we do have some travel coming up. Larry Embry and Brian Johnson need to travel to New Bern, somewhere out in coastal area for an EM conference. If they, when they attend, it gives us extra DMPG money. And that's Miller Arch, and then Miss Embry and her dispatchers need to attend some mandatory 911 training, which we do have in their budget for Wilkes County, and that's coming up in the next couple of weeks. So that may be probably an action item as well. And then I just wanted to give you an overview of what my life's looking like in the next few weeks. We are starting the fixed asset inventory next week, so I'll probably be out of pocket working on that. We'll be doing the indirect cost plan, EMS cost report, and then it'll be budget time. So if I'm looking a little antisocial in that one. Any questions?
Thank you very much, baby. I appreciate that you put this together. Ms. Clark, will you make sure that we, we get those things for travel?
Yes.
That is what I'd be most grateful to get in digital. What it's on this. Bye, good. Alright, thank you very much. By this time, we'll recognize Mr. David Dodson. Good to see you, Dave.
I'm here on behalf of the Recycling Sanitation Board to discuss, discuss something that's come up in the last several meetings. Commissioner Edwards and Holder both on that committee, weren't at last meeting, and now you're both in meetings for travel. One of the things that kept coming up in the last several meetings was the need for eliminating the fee at the transfer station for large household bulky items. And we're talking about mattresses, box springs, broken furniture and the like. But it's my understanding, Noddy Ors, that we're really not charging people for that anyhow, and there's a perception in the county that, that we do charge for it. And as a result, people are dumping the stuff at the dump stations instead, and that's going to cost a lot more work and a lot more probably cost for our sanitation people, because they have to take a special truck out to get all that stuff, they can't pick up the regular garbage truck. So it's, we didn't have enough for a quorum, but if you two were in agreement, then, then that would be enough to constitute a quorum, and make a formal recommendation, that'd be an action item maybe tonight if you put it in this eliminate. Now, we would not eliminate business, dumping, or demolition, just large household stuff that everybody has to get rid of periodically.
Okay, I need some clarification on that. Well, how is it that we're not charged? How is it that we're not charged completely?
If it goes down to sales, it's supposed to be charged. Now, if a person takes it out there themselves and dumps it off...
Yeah, what, what happens is, people bring it out in a truck, they dump it right on the transfer station for it. And so there's no sanitation of people involved in the process at all. And right now, we don't, and the perception is that people have to pay for that, so they're not doing that. And what's happened, out of cost fares or disconvenience, their dump is at the transfer station, which ends up costing us a lot more. So if Noddy's feeling was this, it's going to be cheaper for us not to charge, then it would be too charging. If we, if we start charging, then all of a sudden, this problem's going to get a lot worse, and it's going to end up costing us more than we're charging. Does that make sense?
We're leaving these both items as drink cans, instead of bringing them up, or else you're...
Yeah.
or else you're not at the transfer station if they'll bring them up. Our sanitation groups will have to get out physically and load these things whenever they come up.
Because what happens now is that we have a regular garbage truck goes out, plus another vehicle with another person to load up all the stuff that's been illegally dumped at the site.
It's not going to eliminate illegal dumping.
No.
It might.
Hopefully, we'll cut it down.
Well, you see the issue with white goods, I mean, the regular white goods, there's no charge whatsoever for white goods.
Right.
And, you know, what else is the issue of of education? We talked about this.
Yeah.
About, you know, instead of throwing it off in the side of the road or, you know, taking it to these the biggest sites that...
Yeah, if we can get the word out that it it won't cost people to do this, we're hoping that will have less people to be in. But it doesn't mean that it's going to stop entirely, because some people are just doing backseating it, probably. But every little bit that we do eliminate at those dump sites does save us money in the form of personnel that run out there all the time.
And then I wonder about the tonnage. You know, if you were to go across the scale of tonnage, I mean, we'd break the employees' salary, time, and everything else to go up.
I bet it it probably is costing you more. It would cost you more if you charged people. Because what's going to happen is people are going to leave it at the dump site, it's not bringing it to the transfer station, and then your expenses, personnel, gas, truck, going out there every time, every day, pick up all this stuff, it's going to cost more than you'd make if you actually charged for the dump.
Well, one question I would have, I don't know if anybody here's got the answer for it. I mean, if we didn't charge it, if somebody comes in with a pickup truck, do you think...
There's cross scales where they'd be charging. Except for the metal, the metal that they're running, they didn't come that way in, and they've got couches and stuff, that's the way I understand it.
Okay. That's what I thought it was. Because I...
So what Donnie, I think, is is looking at, if we don't charge for the mattresses, the couches and stuff, then if we dump them out in the dump sites. I went across plate and gel last year and there's seven couches along plate and gel road, and there will be people dumped off the bike.
I would salt the air with the Highway twenty-eight edition of that.
Well, I'll tell you, a day from where I stand, you know, we can look at this and see it, because if it's going to help about, you know, not having those things just dumped there and having to use more time, effort, and everything else. But the issue that we really do, you know, is the issue with enforcement on the things of demolition. It's illegal, but shankers, basketball shankers, you know, and dumping.
Yeah, and one of the things that people are saying, Donnie was saying, is that we want to make sure that we don't exclude that stuff from paying, because we do want constructions and demolition, you've got to pay for that.
Yeah.
Because Donnie was going to tear down their house every year, but everybody has furniture and mattresses and box springs that you get rid of periodically, so it's it makes some sense.
Okay. Anybody have? We have to look at this, I think. I don't think we made the decisions, and I can, I don't know about the rest of the board, but it makes sense to me. Everybody does, and just one day we'll we'll look at it.
Okay, great.
And while I'm while I'm working at this, I'll just go ahead and mention it to you. And I know that we've run into some issue with the Forest Service, the issue of legal. You said that probably, you did email and ask about some ideas that I might have, but I'm not doing that. And you brought up some ideas about using maybe gas heaters.
Yeah, I'm hearing about small car racing heaters and things.
Yeah, because I don't know how long that the Forest Service has said that it's going to take, because you said there had to be one day.
They told me, they told me that it was highly unlikely that it would be done in February, and that they couldn't promise me any time. Apparently, they've got a big backlog of thirty-some months' sites across the western part of the state. They've got these studies going on, not just not just our garbage sites, but other issues with the Forest Service. And so they're backed up, is what I'm hearing.
And this is for a phone call?
Yeah, all we got to do is dig a hole. That's all. I mean, it's not going to cut any trees, it's not going to cut any limbs, it's just simply digging a hole for a hole. So anyhow, one of the ideas that Rob Taylor floated from the dinner was to go ahead and launch the program without those two sites just to get it going. Because one of the big issues, and Greg and I have been talking about this, is we're eligible for a hundred and thirty thousand on the grant.
Yeah.
We march first, and if we don't have our existing program launched by then, it's highly unlikely they're going to get this money for the program to, you know. And it will be a transfer station plan that's that's been thought about. And one of the things that we're really looking at is building a small recycling transfer station at the new facility, and we can cover that almost entirely by grant funding. But we've got to be able to get the grant. Can't get the grant if we get this this program up. So in our next meeting, which is going to be in early February, we're going to discuss, you know, what can we do? Do we go ahead and launch partially, at least get some of it up and running? Do we look at car racing heaters for these other two sites just to keep our our personnel warm and maybe get some solar lighting or something so there's some light out there, at least as a temporary, you know, temporary kind of solution to the problem.
Do you have funds to do that?
I think we do. I think there's some excess. We didn't use all of the grant funds, and I'm sure Rob Taylor would would support for that. Andy Cable, I don't know if he's here. Yeah, Andy, Andy can offer us one of his car racing heaters. He's got one, but he said he'd let us use, so. So we we do need to find some way to get this thing off the ground before before the second grant period, so.
Absolutely.
That's where we're at.
All right, great. All right, any questions or comments for Dave? Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I will let Messe be there next morning. By this time, we recognize Mr. Glenn Mulehausen with the Chamber of Commerce.
He's not here, he's in a meeting.
Okay. All right, next, we'll have the Recreation Plan. If I can recognize Jason Sawyer and Andy Cable.
Okay, Andy, the last thing, I guess, I gave most of you a copy of the Recreation Plan was, I gave it to you before at one point, too, and we're needing to adopt that plan into place as part of the part of, kind of the the part of grants on scoring system if our plans adopted it. Gives a couple of extra bonus points for the part of grant at Stanley.
Well, you know, I did, I looked over that. I've got to mention one of the things that that in there two included the parking lot. That's a great idea. It'll help somebody's field somewhere, might a beach group. But, you know, that's more like, I saw that as an addition on the backside of it, so I think that's a good idea. We need to mention that, not have a parking lot at Johnson.
Yeah, that was found as too.
A pickaxe.
Yeah, it was, it was there. The Recreation Plan, and this is one we handed in with them, looking at the Stanley property, and so you need to have a board to approve the Recreation Plan as it's presented, so that it'll be a part of this particular part of the plan, too. You know, be able, what they call the documents lives on top, be able to weld as we go along. So I appreciate that you're presenting that. I'll get it, and I'm fine with it. Anyone else? All right, I believe we're good. Mr. Sawyer will have a have a vote on that. That is on the action items. All right, thank you very much. All right, this time, we'll recognize Mr. David.
Stepped over, I guess, pretty much what I was going to do is just give a little update on who we're all for, as far as everything's looking all fine. Our grant has been reviewed by Luann Frye. She is the lady who's over part. We were very positive on everything that she looked at, did that last Wednesday. Really no issues going forward with with the park that I see, but one of the things I would say is that if you all approve of the Recreation Plan, it's a big step to getting your some. Can I answer any questions you all have about the park or anything that's in there? Otherwise, we're we're that's the most important. I grant this to be submitted on the thirty-first, should have no objections to doing that, but we're ready with that today. We came out this morning looking at the property, so we should we should get something back and we could.
Okay, and I understand you said there's a short turnaround on this, on the grant sale?
Absolutely. We should know probably by the mid-February if we should get them done. Yeah, we're right up against the deadline to get it to get done. But we were done as far as just making a review, that's the whole thing, but they have got one page on review side sometime.
Let's put a red tag on it.
Oh, yeah. We're good to go, otherwise, I think, good.
One thing, the county's competition is this this management thing, has that been discussed?
The Andy, the management, the land being granted to the county would be the would be the match.
Yeah, there's no there's no county act required.
I can't believe I'm at this bar and ask that question.
Yeah, there's nothing, the grant hopefully today, you know, from the appraisal, I think we will be upwards in that, you know, four hundred thousand to five range when we get the rate back on open, go play for. And if that be the case, then part of we'll do, you know, whatever that is. If it's four hundred fifty, then they'll match four fifty. So the land will be our match, four hundred fifty thousand dollars to work on the market. I spent last, I think, last week as well, spent with the Cherokee, talked to Jason Lambert, who's their financial guy, and their long-term planning, and they they're very interested. They're trying to help us with that, so hopefully get some funds from them as well to do some additional work. So if we put it all together, you know, we could potentially have well over a million dollars worth of grants granted to the county, no county, but this is part of our work.
Wow, that's a cool opportunity.
It it could be really good if it not to be open like so.
Yeah.
And I'd like to say, I mean, I want to win in on the work that he's put in to this park, right? He's put together a very, very nice package, been able to get a lot of this documentation. I mean, for a partner grant of this size, it's a highly competitive grant to stay, and we're getting a lot of really good feedback over the efforts that Andy's done. And I can't say enough about the job that he's doing there and in other areas of county economy, but it's going really, really well.
It is. You know, I really appreciate the work.
It's a scoring system of a hundred, and if we don't get like ninety-eight, I'll be really disappointed. I mean, we should get a hundred because the great community, the Parks and Recreation community, even though the county has dissolved the dirt over time, that will be an existence that allows us to to use that a couple of times. So we should be right at a hundred on our point scale, and there really shouldn't be reasons we don't get it.
That's correct. Great, was there the right time to talk about it? That's always something you...
Well, it's like the Recreation Plan, it's been in place for a long time, and they've got to get over the years of having those things in place when you need it.
Yeah, it is the visited document. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any further comment for programs?
Congratulations, y'all. Thank you all, congratulations, all of us.
It's all my prayer, baby.
One other thing I'll mention, and I've said that there's probably some paperwork from Stanley on the twenty-second. There will still be paperwork, but we have been advised by by part of the law, we will take any possession of that until we know that those places have to come together at the same time. We can't have the property, county can't own that property prior to, you know, to just make sure that I didn't pay off.
Okay, we need to make sure we can coordinate what we need to do.
Right, and we will, as soon as I know that we're pretty close to getting the grant and everything's going to be there, the paperwork from Stanley, they've already begun to start calling up.
That's great. All right, thank you so very much. Appreciate it. All right, this time, we'll have another, I know, I've got one more, I almost forgot this. Ms. Alicia Barr, private vaccine and dental fees.
I do not have the dental fees ready. Of course, I do have to present to the board of health before I present the commissioners from their approval, so I did not get those ready. But I do have the vaccine, private vaccines, ready. Couple of years ago, some of y'all were here during that time, but the state changed due to budget restraints, changed the vaccine availability that they provide by the state to the local public health departments to provide to the community. During that change, they they basically changed from universal vaccine to what's called VOC or Vaccine for Children vaccine. They changed who's eligible to actually receive the vaccines that the state provides to the health department for free. Basically, now, the only people that that do get vaccines for free is the Medicaid-eligible, uninsured, American Indian, and Alaska Native, underinsured, and unaccompanied minors without proof of insurance for being presented for Title X clinics, which is our family planning clinic. If you meet any of those guidelines, you still do get the state-supplied vaccines for free. If you do not meet those guidelines, so if you are insured or if you have other means for 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 coverage of that, then you're you do not meet those qualifications and have to actually receive what's called purchase vaccine. For the two years, we've been able to manage to piecemeal vaccine together to basically not, I don't know if you really know what that means, that's not a good word, but to actually manage to get the vaccine that available that still that still met the old criteria, which was universal, to be able to to get everybody supplied with vaccines. We have little by little opened up and have run out of that vaccine that was available for universal, so we're now in the process to be able to make sure there is no barrier to vaccine to public, or going to have to actually purchase vaccine, such as Prebnar, T-Dow, which is tetanus and prosthesis, Manactra, basically any of the childhood vaccinations and also adult vaccinations when it comes to tetanus or tetanus and prosthesis vaccine. So we are going to have to start purchasing some of those to to prevent a barrier, which is part of the contracted end of our immunizations. And in doing so, there's going to be a fee, of course, associated with it for those that's not qualified for the free vaccine. The concern is, of course, to make sure we manage it, because vaccine has a short shelf life. To make sure we manage it, when we do purchase this vaccine, that we purchase it in a way to to work with other counties, maybe to make sure that there's no time that we will actually waste any of that vaccine that we purchased. But the Board of Health made a motion and passed to present to the board of commissioners for a fee for these purchased vaccines of at-cost plus twenty percent. And basically, what that twenty percent covers is the expense, because we're not going to be able to build for the administration pay like we do through Medicaid and all other programs for the other. So it basically covers the expense of your administration of the vaccine, whether it be from the paperwork, to getting it ready, to the needles, to the disposal of the sharps containers, to the alcohol, to, you know, all of that that goes along with that, to the, you know, input, inputting the information into the national registry, to, you know, to the full timeframe. It usually takes about thirty minutes to do a full, if it's really a good day, it takes about thirty to forty-five minutes to do a full set of the child childhood immunizations. So basically, that twenty percent, we covered part of that cost. It will not cover it all, but at least it will be us recouping any cost that we have in it, plus a little bit extra for actual expense of other items to do that. To give you an idea of the Prebnar vaccine is just per dose for us to purchase. Our purchase price is a hundred and two dollars right now. Of course, it changes based on the market every day. T-Dow is thirty dollars per dose. Manactra is a hundred and five dollars per dose. We did not set these guidelines. You know, it was a whole lot happier when everybody was able to walk into our health department and we were able to say the state supplies these vaccines and we can give them. You don't have to go through all the screening process, but the state did change that, and we did have to go by those new guidelines. And we are going to have to be able to get purchase vaccines, so the question is, you know, approval of what type of fees that you want to charge. And again, the Board of Health made the motion and passed to charge cost plus twenty percent, cost of the vaccine plus twenty percent, which would cover the additional cost of the supplies.
Well, let me let me ask this, Alicia, is the report of private insurance coverage, if someone brings the child into immunizations?
Private insurance at times does cover it. We did not have it in place because we want a primary care provider being able to actually, we can build that, but what would happen is, is, you know, we don't know if they meant they're deductible or if it actually does cover it. And so what we can do is, like through our NEL program right now, what we do is give people the bill sheets, which has the codes on it, and they can they can send submitted into their insurance company and get paid their self right for it.
But if they come in for a series of vaccines, they're going to have to come up that amount, huh?
Yes, sir. And what that's done is for people that has insurance, it's it's causing them to have to go out of the county, to doctors' offices out of the county, to actually get the vaccine up to now.
That's really going to be a detriment if people give their children vaccines.
It is. And then it's mandated to start schools, so it is something that, you know, that they have to do. And so...
So more people tend to be going to private clinics, right?
Well, they could unless they come through us and pay for it and then build their insurance or something.
You said people, most people will avoid that if they can.
That is very true. That's why I say we're definitely going to have to try to work with others, providers and other health departments to make sure we maintain a shelf life that we can... to make sure we maintain a shelf life that we can move the vaccine without it selling.
So the health board cases termination with what you have to do with those prices, which are not negotiable, that you're dealing with twenty percent of the vaccine. Yes, there's any choice in that. It gets into that transnations?
We've got to provide it. I mean, it's not an option. It's state law that we do provide it. And like I say, I managed to be able to work around that, to provide it as much as possible before we got our, all the criteria, the vaccine we had for.
And what you need is for approval of the rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I have that. Is there any discussion, first call of order, about any questions? That seems all the time. I mean, just the vaccine. I didn't realize it was that much.
It's under it.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much. And you'll bring the dental fees another time?
Yes, sir. I'll be there.
Thank you very much. All right, this time it's been long, but we have a period of public comment coming. Is this Brian, Martin, Martin?
Martin Rogers.
Martin, sorry. Martin Rogers. Okay, Mr. Rick Day. Someone break that.
What's this? Hey, Mr. Edwards. How you doing? It's a pleasure to be here tonight, or else we'd be, right?
Yep.
Listen, I tell you, things are really looking good for Grand County. I'm really impressed with all the work that's going on and all the different groups that are working together, you know, to great for Grand County. Congratulations to the health department for all the work that they're doing. And especially to Alicia Barnes, for her leadership. Not only at the health department, but also at, with chairing the Great Health and Social Committee. That's one of the more active committees of the Gray organization. Jason Sawyer, good job, man. That recreation plan has been out there for about three years. Great to approve it. So thank you all for endorsing that plan. It's a good job. And special congratulations to Andy Kett, a part of Grant's, Marshall. He's done some good work. Great. I'm sure you're involved in that too. So I appreciate that. Commissioners, I appreciate you proving the Stanley Park and it's going to be just really something great. Actually, I'm here, I was hoping to invite you to workshop activities, the time away from you, away from us, but wanted to come and make a special invitation for you to attend the great meeting this Thursday. I rescheduled meetings from last Thursday. We'll have a appreciation of social starting at four o'clock. You're welcome to attend all of the festivals. And then at five o'clock, the great meeting will start. We'll have a meal after the meeting. The big thing at the great meeting will be the unveiling of the new strategic plan for the Gray organization that we've been working on for about four months. Our consultant will be coming and presenting that to the, to the audience for their reaction to that plan. Also, at two o'clock on that same day, you may be aware of this, but we will be looking at the one twenty-nine bypass stritch getting plans. This will be close to the final presentation by Sarah Rayon with Region A, nineteen oh Sarah and others, and Don Costelbeck, who is working with Sarah to come up with a plan for the one twenty-nine bypasses and some seating areas, new sidewalks, new structure, bypassing, we're hoping that'll work out. Also, following that meeting, Don Costelbeck will be unveiling a grant that the Gray organization received from Region A, Appalachian Regional Commission for the pedestrian connectivity study for the city limits of Robbinsville. The ultimate goal there is using the Reimagining Robbinsville document. If you've seen that, that's resulted from the community workshops and about two and a half years of work of the Gray Revitalization and Infrastructure Committee. But using that document as the, kind of the catalyst to promote the greenways and the trailways and connectivity within Robbinsville. The Stanley Park is just one of the components of that. The other terminus is at the high school. So we're hoping to start all the way from the high school and end up at the new Stanley Park and connect among the existing sidewalks and new greenways and all our walkways. So I'm hoping that the commissioners will get behind that project and get behind that particular recommendation. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and I just received this in an email, but it's in the Parks and Recreation Magazine. And this kind of just highlights some of the things that Alicia was talking about, about some of the key trends in public health and the need for park and recreation in our communities. And of course, we know that the national statistics, one in three adults is obese. Twenty-five children are obese. Diabetes is rampant among our population and certainly here in Grand County. And one of the ways to manage that and certainly to lose weight is to walk. It's kind of hard to walk if you don't have someplace to walk. So what we're proposing is that, and hoping that you guys will support, the greenway recommendation of the Reimagining Robbinsville document and get behind that and help in whatever way you can, and certainly you are already with the, with the Stanley Park. But wouldn't it be great if doctors prescribed walking instead of peels to lose weight? Do what?
If you can walk.
Yeah, if you can walk. And you know, there are walking programs out there. And actually, one of the grants that the Gray organization has received through Marshall University and one of the walking programs that we're beginning to implement is called Walking the Deeds. And it's for, it's through the Arthritis Foundation. So if you can stand and be physically active for ten minutes, then that would really help. So that's one, there's a lot of programs that are out there. So there's five trends. And one of the trends is that parks are good medicine. And we know that's true. The second trend is, and Alicia already mentioned this as a recommendation made priority from the Healthy Care Alliance group, is tobacco-free parks. And, you know, we all know we say it's harmful when cigarette butts along the walkways, that's not a good thing. So we need to provide as many healthy role models as we can for children. And then community walking programs. I know that the health department is doing a lot of that. So we need to get behind that. And then the big thing is that the health impact assessments. And the health department certainly has gone through that process. But one of the key components of the pedestrian connectivity project is an analysis of the health impact that these walking trails could have for Grand County. So our consultant, Don Costelbeck, he will be talking about that and will be unveiling that particular project on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, at two o'clock at Town Hall. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to attend that also. So thank you for your time. Congratulations on all of the things going on. Organizations are working together, which is really, really good. And things are beginning to be started, or being a lot around here for Grand County. So a lot of good things. Just keep moving forward without the positive things that are going on. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Days. Appreciate it very much. Okay, at this time we'll recognize the county manager, Greg. We've got, of course, a discussion out of this. And a lot of this too will be informational for us.
Hey, we got you on this paper call. Can you hear me?
All right. First on your discussion item, Jen, I got a call a few weeks ago from Bill Gibson, the Southwest Commission Region A. And he asked if I would consider an appointment to the Partnership for Children, which is an organization that's comprised of several headquarters throughout various different counties. And they have a county manager seat. And Bill asked, upon approval of the board of commissioners here in Grand County, if I would be willing to serve in that capacity. And I told him I would be happy to with your blessing. And that was, it's the Smart Start program that you see that we have locally and it's just oversight with various members throughout different counties. And they have the county managers. Paulie from Hazel was the previous county manager that settled his pound. And he asked, Bill had made a recommendation to the existing board for himself. And everything's finally approved and he wanted to get to Grand County where we should approve on that. That will be an action item a little bit later on. Next, we have at the NCACC Legislative Convention in Raleigh, which will be leaving tomorrow, about noon for, originally the board appointed Chairman Mike Evers to be the voting delegate. And I think that since you're not going to be able to go to that and have myself appointed as the voting delegate.
Here's what it was. I know that you and Commissioner Orton have been very active on subcommittees, given a lot of work on the administrative goals, the legislative goals for the NCACC. And I have not. I have not been to meetings to do that. So I felt that, you know, that we could have a delegate to go and vote. This will work. There were you and you're on the list and let either one to go. And it is quite a process. And I don't, you've never been to one and you've not. So I have. And I think it'd be well worth it. So that's the reasoning behind it. You know, I think that you need to be there because you want to be abreast of everything that's going on with that. I've done it over a few years, but I've not anticipated the subcommittees that made those long trips.
And Commissioner Orton and I are planning on attending this in Raleigh. So whatever, however you want, like the meeting you set, I certainly would. Next, on discussion items, the emergency medical services ordinance. This was brought up in the December meeting and we wanted to have our council time to review it and to, that way we can make a recommendation as to whether or not the board... Now Larry Emery is here and he may be able to provide any additional information that you will need. Question wise, we want to make sure everyone is understandable as this ordinance is presented. It's to limit the capability of outside emergency service providers operating within the county. And it's, it's an ordinance that definitely is worth taking a look at through your view.
Larry, Larry had shared it with us. Don, have you looked at this, the issue of franchise? Does the term choose franchise or... I may be completely off base, but we're not asking for a franchise.
No, what you're doing is you're setting it up so that nobody can come in and operate through the county unless you...
Are aware.
Okay. Very refreshing, man, because I know you've been since December.
Just like Don said, it would just, the state recommended that the county, if you have a passion ordinance, to keep pre-lancers from coming in and sitting out without the board of commissioners having to say so, who operates within their county.
Okay. Now, one question to make, Monty, that if you have someone who's in a rest home in given county and that rest home, that facility has West Care or a mission, and they're bringing that client back to Grand County, where does that fit the scheme of business?
That would be a transform service outside the county. They're passing through the county, they're actually operating here.
Okay. So we're talking about emergency call?
Partnership services.
Partnership services, okay.
So it's like when you have a sudden event or something happens, because sometimes we have to, you know, if we're in short, they have to call. It's got language in there that allows us to do that.
We draw a very messy disaster or something where we call people in, it covers that.
And that's happened a lot, right? I mean, we have one right now in Swain, don't we, over the issue of solid?
We do. And Cherokee County.
Yeah. I knew.
Cherokee County, times they've come over, led that area, had to design some erection. We had all the experience.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on that? All right. Thank you very much.
Next on your agenda, you'll see in the previous meeting, we brought up the Clean Water Management Trust Fund ordinance. And what it was, it was a request coming out of the director of Clean Water Management last month. And we brought it up and we had a discussion about whether or not Grand County would consider this. Commissioner Allen asked that we perhaps take another look at this ordinance for Grand County. I want, I have contacted the folks around, I have contacted around Sherries, all of Region A. And I asked him, I said, "Ride, tell me how I need to inform the board, my board, as far as this ordinance is concerned." He said, "Basically, this is a program that used to be funded at a hundred million dollars a year. And that funding is about ten million dollars a year now." And he said, "The most important resource of this funding is, is that they promote clean water." He said, "It's not as much of bureaucracy as what it may seem." I wanted the board to have all the information. I think Commissioner Allen may have some points that he may want to make on, on shore. And I also wanted to let the board know that, you know, in previous, Alicia, she's still here. She can have a discussion on the Clean Water Management grants that we did a few years ago, which were responsible for the second tanks. And if I'm not mistaken, the boathouse tanks and things like that that we're putting. Coming out of Southwest Commission Region A, and I asked Ride an impartial question. Okay, man, how do we need the support? And he felt strongly that, you know, any funding that's retained for the Clean Water Management Trust Fund is certainly needed, that the support is needed there for that. But I wanted the board to entertain it's not as much in regards to supporting data and, you know, keeping their administrative going as it is. The actual hands-on field work is done throughout the state of North Carolina to promote healthy clean water.
Well, this kind of fits in. I know this has some of the industry built, the danger spirit been there most of the time.
Yes, sir.
I could maybe rephrase that. They're a difficult agency to deal with.
Yes, sir.
But the standpoint of clean water, this kind of goes hand in hand with another discussion topic that we're having. And actually, I hope it will be an action item tonight, is regarding to the report that Joe Bonnet from Grand County made to us about water quality in San Tito Lake. The way it was presented then was that the cost would be to the county, as I understand it, around sixteen hundred dollars, or seventeen hundred dollars, and the municipalities, the municipalities were contributing to that pot of money for three years. We had those studies done. Keeping this in mind, I remember sitting here as a commission, listening also about someone who had came to replacify the lake, Lake Santina, that it might be a place to get water. And, you know, with development, you have to have water, you have to have local water. And yeah, we have wells and this, that and the other for municipalities, but you don't know what's going to happen on how the road, the world stands. So my look at this is, is that it can be a source of income to be helped, helping out to do these studies. And you'd be able to look out a little bit farther than just maybe three years, maybe at least for three years anyway, to where maybe the grant for something like that qualifies that water at San Tito. Because that's the only one that I've heard mentioned as being a potential source of drinking water. So soon as we get on top of it and start monitoring that as being local water, we need to, we need to be looking at the sources of funds. Because I mean, if you say that's just seventeen hundred dollars, but yeah, maybe it is. But if we can find a way to help get this started and, you know, be... And I'm wary too of what comes with it, you know, with the water quality. What I've seen is that the funds that come to the county, the waste treatment over here with the dump station, I'm wary as part of that. Same boathouses, because we've been able to try and chase down other, the managers have done some research, trying to find out about the funding on all of that. So my, my contribution to that should be is that I'd be in favor of us having a, an ordinance to that effect. I'd be interested to hear what Commissioner Allen might have to say.
Well, my concerns about it, I hate to win the vote on it. But I got to think about it. I've read something, it was in a package, I didn't read that, I'm sorry for that. But it's my understanding without the doubt is, then these people can't get, the health department can't get grants to help folks put in safety tanks to camp for. I'm not very able to relate to them. So that was really, I thought we needed to look at it again.
You see, there's always those things hanging out there. I mean, you.
I spoke with Ryan while we were in the administration and also went to a water resource session. And a lot of the people from the School of Government, we're talking about large, of course, like Wayne, Mclaren County, and those counties where they have to use their lakes for drinking water. And indeed, looking at it today, we have our wells, we have our springs and many sources of water. But making some foundational preparation for the future is a wise and prudent choice.
Can I, can I make a comment about the Clean Water Management Trust Fund? In working with the Health Department over here, Clean Water Management Trust Fund, back when they was receiving it with a large amount of money, actually funded the state on what was called the WAKE program, which was Waste Elimination, let's see, Waste Elimination or Waste Discharge Elimination Program is what it was.
Straight pipe, to eliminate straight pipe?
Yes, to eliminate straight pipe, which is protection of water quality. And during that time, like, you know, we were one of the first ones. I jumped on it real quick and volunteered for Grand County to be a part of that program. And they came in here and was doing surveys in our water pump shed areas. They themselves, through that program, repaired multiple saving systems ahead of time. Then we decided that we'd like to be able to just provide that services right here in Grand County. So we applied for a grant and they actually gave us, through that program, five hundred sixty thousand dollars, plus through the WAKE program, a hundred and twelve thousand dollar match pretty much, minus a little bit of our time that we put into it, that supplied us with repairing well over a hundred saving systems. That was straight pipe into our city water supply system. So that kind of gives you an idea of what this has already helped Grand County. This, you know, it was, it was anything from repairing pipes under houses that was broken for people or to redo and plumbing. Some of those systems cost, Billy knows this, because some of those systems was up close to fifteen thousand dollars, which was pump systems, that they paid even for surveys to be done to be able to get this on a, you know, sever, piece of property where people didn't have any way to make kind of repair a system. So they've been very, very gracious in supporting Grand County over the last, you know, ten years. Very, very good program.
Okay, thank you.
And that will be an action item as well for the Board to consider. Next, on discussion items, ask the Director Larry Emery to come and discuss the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan for two thousand and thirteen.
Two years ago, we signed off on the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Grand County. Since that time, last year, Department of Homeland Security, law, their grants are going regionalized. We want everything to go regional where they pay more people, different counties. So last year, there's Grand County out to some day Hazard Mitigation Plans. There's only one other one that probably already was safe, next to the Central Department of North Carolina, where they have the nuclear plants, three counties around it. So this April stadium got the gap, so that's due to one regional plan that covered the counties with heat and plumbing. So that was Swain, Haywood, Jackson, Cherokee County, Grand County. Since ours was adopted, it went through a state, federal government, less than a year, whenever this application was, they just took what documentation that we'd already done. For us, up to half plan, it took over a year to go through the process that day. Like I said, they just took what documentation we'd already done and the law already had it signed off and they just put it in with the rest of the other counties. And that was made through the state, state signed off on it. FEMA has signed off on it, Fairfield has signed off on it. Just waiting for resolutions from the county to campus at this time.
All right, any questions or comments? Thank you, Larry.
All right, next, on your discussion items, which will require an action item for, the school of government's got a Community Development Academy. And it's a six-day course that covers the concept, methods and strategies of community economic development. And the course says that the course provides community development practitioners with significant perspective and practical skills surrounding community development in North Carolina. This is for our economic development, Director Andy Cable, School of Government. And the program topics that they are going to be covering would be community development finance, affordable housing strategies, roles in developing CDBG and related grant programs, which is something that we're certainly trying to get rolled out of both county to be able to administer there. Environmental finance vision and citizen participation, tools for group decision-making and measure of success. I know that I'm currently in a class with school of government in Raleigh. As you all know, I've gone a week out of the month, whatever, whatever's going on. I found that course to be, I mean, it's really, really helpful to me in the development mission and why I'm going here for the county. The Community Development Academy is a tremendous place and I think it can be an asset for our economic development. Director Daniel wants to attend to that. It's, it's a six-day course, it'll be March twelfth through the fourteenth, and then it will be on by April twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. The fee for this class is six hundred and ninety dollars. There are scholarships available, we are looking into that. And I wanted to see if the Board of Commissioners would give the recommendation to see if we could not have Mr. Cable be able to attend these courses now. And like I said, I have had some of these courses, you know, the class that I am in is a very comprehensive class that encompasses a lot of these things. I highly recommend anytime we get some of our folks in some of these classes, of course, there are so many ideas that you never would have thought of, heard of, things you can, can't do, that you, you figure out a hard way. And I think any of this would be good for him. And he's aware of it, he's a more informed, he's more experienced.
Is that under action items?
It is under action items. And what, what I would ask is the Board make an action item to approve this course. We hope we get a scholarship, nothing definite there that we would, but be able to cover the registration and the trial for that.
This finance officer, we have six hundred and ninety dollars for that.
Well, his budget, he's well within his budget. And I feel like that if people, I mean, he's already given a great job and if you're going to give him more totals, there's still costs to do, the work he's already getting well everywhere, it's well worth it.
And I've got to go ahead and do this.
Right that chance.
I just want to tell the Board with this, the CDBG, whenever you go out for a person to go about the grants, and we have able-bodied people in the employ of Grand County. Part of the, that deal is that there was a ten percent administrative, the last goal ran to sixty thousand dollars. I'd like to see the sixty thousand dollars stay in Grand County. And, you know, we have qualified personnel trained. And there are the qualifications that I've had myself come to understand that our county planner is capable of that doing. But I see this as an investment all the way around for what's happened to our county manager and his ability to be able to do when he's gone. A week, a week out of the month, a week out of the great system, a week out of management, but everybody hopes to get us somehow. And he does, and we miss you when you're gone. But I believe this would be a great thing for Mr. Cable to give this as qualifications and where we can work our way around, we have somebody in-house that is a CDBG.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are continuing to pursue, we're finding out, I don't know about the CDBG process, but it is, we're definitely looking into any and all avenues to get all those classes and all those certifications done. It's, it's not something that happens quickly though. I'm coming to find out. It's, it's a, a process of being in the loop and getting that done.
It's almost a journey, you have to do a transition.
Yes, sir.
And I understand that. So I think some folks are working on that already too.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you.
Next, you all should have a copy of the Grand County Performance Evaluation Policy. And we drafted this up whenever, within the personal policy that provided an outline for department heads to be able to do evaluations on employees at least yearly. And we would want these evaluations to go inside around March, that way they can be within the county manager's office. And whenever it comes down to the budget and we start doing raises, we'll have better, more better information on how to proceed with employees throughout the county. Take, take some time and read through that if there's any questions, concerns, additions, additions, whatever, before we make a flag. We can certainly take care of that.
Okay, and I'd like to end this too, and I say this because I'm aware of what's happening is, you know, the performance evaluations, you know, that has to do with period climate probation too.
Yes, sir.
With regard to those that come off board with Grand County. I think it's on six months, I'm afraid. But also with that, I know that our county manager, Ron, and a lot of other folks are working on trying to get a pay plan put together to where it's actually on steps. We have people that are working for Grand County, you know, they need to be able to have this step process in order to, to advance. And that advancement needs to be credited on performance. And I don't know if this has ever been done before, it may have fifty years ago, I don't know that I'm here now and this Board's here now. And I think it's a good way to do it. And my whole career was under evaluation for performance. And if you perform badly, there is a recommendation, and there's more justification for me to give somebody or not give somebody, but to go and be able to say to somebody, you know, you have this for rates, instead of saying, well, we'll just give everybody five cents across the board or ten cents across the board. I mean, that's all well and good. I mean, you want to pay your employees, you know, what you can, a fair wage. But when it comes to full performance, then obviously that is a more fair way of doing it. So I'm sold on it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And you, in the ninety day and six month, boy, that's currently in the policy. And this right here is an addendum to the policy outlined to existing employees and then that evaluation policy moving forward. If this is agreeable to the Board, we would ask them, it's in the action items to approval of this performance evaluation policy that's laid out before you or whatever changes we may need to make. Next, I am happy to report, I got the information last week, I got a letter from Daniel Lee Smith, District Extension Director for North Carolina Extension Service. Two weeks ago, I was able to participate with Mr. Dan Smith and another gentleman from another region, another district, in interview, in the interview process for the new county extension director. And there were two candidates, a lady from the Michigan area and a local gentleman, Randy Collins, who has been interim director here. Most everyone here knows Randy. I'm happy to report and I would like to read the first part of the letter here on behalf of the NCA Department of Extension Service. I would like to recommend Randall Collins for the position of County Extension Director in Grand County. It is my understanding that you will be presenting this recommendation to Grand County Board of Commissioners for their consideration there at the next meeting, January twenty-second. As I stated earlier in, whenever we brought up the interview process for myself to be, to be a part of that, the State Extension Office is asking a cost share of Grand County to go from twenty-eight percent that we have been paying to thirty percent. With the increase in Randy Collins' salary, that would bring the county contribution to around three thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars a year for his salary.
And I believe you said that our Dr. also, that it was just a raise of what, twelve hundred and twenty-two dollars? I think it's around twelve hundred dollars.
Yes, sir. The cost is just an extra twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred and twenty-two.
Thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars is what net going from twenty-seven point nine percent to thirty percent. So it's not a, a great deal of increase. And of course, that includes his going from an interim director, actually it's just a, he wasn't even paid as an interim director, he was just paid as an extension agent. And with the directorship, he would actually get fifty percent income rate. So that, that includes those numbers. And that is on your action items to approve Randy Collins for the county extension director position as well as the cost share. I will say that, you know, the, the outcome of this hiring process, I feel like certainly went in favor of Grand County. And that Randy's a real asset to the county. And certainly glad that he's in that position as far as, of course, I'm concerned there for sure. Next on the list is the water testing of Santa Clara Lake. It was presented by Grand Member Joe Bonnet. Chairman Ed would you touched on this a few minutes ago. You're right, it was a process that was going to cost around five thousand dollars a year. This cost as presented was to be shared by the town of Santa Clara, the town of Robbinsville and Grand County, which would put our cost share at a thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, a third of that. One thing that I am unsure of in a conversation that Economic Rel. Director Andy Cable and myself had the other day with Bobby Smith, Bobby indicated that the town was not going to go along with the water testing of this, because I asked him specifically about it and that we were considering and what the towns. So I'm not sure where that stands. I called Rick Davis just a little while ago to ask him about it.
Do you think that?
He, he wasn't aware of, you know, what the development was on the town side of that. But I'm, I'm not sure where, where that stands, if that would be go from a three-part venture to, down to, you know, a cost share between county and county of Santa Clara would proceed. Now, and, you know, the, it may be a different outcome on the town side. They, they may decide to go, I don't know, but I don't have that information right now to be able to say, hey, this is what you're going to do. I don't have it.
I've been invited to the meeting with the town of Robbinsville, this is in February, Joe Bonnet's going to present at the meeting.
Okay.
Bring up the same information. So I don't know, I mean, I'm going to speak for the town. But again, I just want to reiterate, you know, the importance of water quality and that, in that, in that body of water. With the prospect of it definitely to thirty-two, and I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about our finance officer, time to talk about this, but, you know, we, it's an investment to have that water quality, you're right. But, you know, I don't know what the town's going to do. And all I know is we've been asked for sixteen hundred and sixty-six dollars and that's all we can do if the Board wants to even entertain that tonight. But also, I want to reiterate about the water quality, that would qualify us. And here I sit, and I don't know for sure that there exists a type of grant there to test for water quality. But I do know that if it is there, we have folks on board that can make, make applications for those monies. If it's not just for our portion, it's not for the portion of, you know, all of it, have the testing done. So that's something that's hanging out there yet. I hope, I hope that all the entities will participate. But what we're being asked for is sixteen hundred and sixty-six dollars.